Hello. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Recognition of the members present, I see that there are all seven councilors present, that Mr. Sutherland, the city administrator is present, and the city clerk, Ms. Hughes, is present to record the meeting. If you would all please join the city council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I have a couple of general items. The first is the recognition of Constitution Week. Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's most important document. It is celebrated annually each week from September 17th to the 23rd. The U.S. Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. The celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution. In 1955, the DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1955, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. The DAR also erected a statute, a structure, that is built in tribute to the Constitution of the United States. The DAR Constitution Hall, which is a performing arts center, opened in 1929. The aims of Constitution Week, of the Constitution Week celebration are to emphasize citizens' responsibility for protecting and defending the Constitution, inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation of our way of life, encourage the study of historic events that led to the framing of the Constitution in September of 1787. The DAR Constitution Week resolution is, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, enables the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to the rule of law, and whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to a patriotic celebration which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, I therefore, the Mayor of Saco, by virtue of the, of my authority with the City of Saco, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution, that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through, through this guardian of our liberties. So, it's Constitution Week, and it starts now, or it starts tomorrow. The next resolution that I have is a Parks and Rec Resolution associated with the, with a grant from the Bureau of Parks and Lands for the construction of a boardwalk as part of the River Walk Trail Project. Whereas the city council supports the grant application made to the Bureau of Parks and Lands for the construction of a boardwalk as part of the River Walk Trail Project, therefore be it resolved, if the City of Saco is awarded a grant by the Bureau of Parks and Lands, the City of Saco agrees to accept the grant award and may begin the project. The City of Saco will comply with all applicable laws, environmental requirements, and regulations as stated in the agreement. And I, I'm looking at this, and I see that I should have this read by a counselor, actually, as it should be a council motion. So, is there a counselor who would read this resolution? Counselor Archer? Just as I had read it?
Yes. Whereas the city council supports the grant application made to the Bureau of Parks and Lands for the construction of a boardwalk as part of the River Walk Trail Project, now therefore be it resolved, if the City of Saco is awarded a grant by the Bureau of Parks and Lands, the City of Saco agrees to accept the grant award and may begin the project. The City of Saco will comply with all applicable laws, environmental requirements, and regulations as stated in the agreement.
Do I have a second on this resolution?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a resolution by Counselor Archer, and a second by Counselor Copeland. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion, the resolution passes 7-0, and will be completed after this meeting is over, and attested to by the city clerk. Next up in the agenda is the public comment, and I have, first of all, Mr. Shiman? Have anything to say associated with the school board?
Yes.
Thank you.
The, we had a finance meeting today, and there is going to be some follow-through when we have joint sessions with the council, because it's a tricky year. The number of students is up significantly at the high school, and the lower grades, more than we anticipated. And there isn't a lot of margin in this budget this year, as it turns out, there's very little margin there, so it's a tricky matter. So, this is something that we're going to be in close touch with the councils, that you're aware of where the potentiality of problems are and how we're going to deal with them, okay? So, it's really important in our communications, and that's basically the report I have.
All right, thank you. And I believe, I don't know if Mr. Averson is here, oh, I see him now, I believe that we're going to have a joint meeting with the school board next Wednesday, is it?
Yes.
Yes. So, next Wednesday will be our September joint meeting with the, with the school board in workshop.
And at this time, we will bring up these matters. Thank you.
Very much. So, note for the council for that upcoming workshop. Next up, Mr. Pylin, would you step forward, state your name and address for the record?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, item, let's see, item C on consent agenda. The mayor has, going to make an appointment of Jack Chinchat as an associate member to the Historic Preservation Commission. My question, Mr. Mayor, is, I don't understand the wisdom of appointing Mr. Chinchat as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee, in light of the fact that he is a candidate for, for Council in Ward Four. Perhaps a better tact might be to wait until after the elections and see if he is elected. If he's not elected, then perhaps it might be a better opportunity at that time to make a nomination, or put him in play for Historic Preservation. As a candidate, I don't see the wisdom. If he gets elected, you're going to have to take him off the Historic Preservation Committee and then assign someone else. So, his term is, let's see, this is roughly the middle of September, he'd actually serve maybe 30, 40 days. If he got elected, you'd have to pull him off, and then somebody else, if you get elected, you'd have to reappoint someone else. So, I actually frankly don't see the wisdom of putting him on the council, or on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Kelly Archer. Excuse me, Mrs. Archer. You're up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street, here in Saco, Mr. Mayor, council members, and the public. Before you tonight is HPC's recommendation of Jack Chinchat to be appointed as an associate member of the Historic Preservation Commission. I became aware of council concern of this recommendation yesterday, and am here to provide full disclosure as to the HPC recommendation for the mayor's nomination and council approval prior to your discussion tonight. I might have forgotten to say, for the record, I am the Chair of the HPC. In early, this year, the HPC has been seeking to fill three associate members vacancies, which was conveyed to the mayor, Planning Department Heads Emily and Denise, council liaison Roger Gay, and Michelle, the city clerk. In early August, the mayor contacted me about two volunteers, one of which you appointed at your last meeting, Andrew Bracy and the HPC, thank you very much for his appointment. The other was Jack Chinchat. It was disclosed by the mayor that he is passionate about preserving Saco's history, and that he may be running for the, a council seat. I did interview Jack, reviewed 23413 and the Rules and Order of Business, 3E, 1 through 5, and he was presented to the HPC in August. The HPC agreed to have Jack placed on the council agenda. In regards to Jack running for a possible council seat, it was discussed with Zack, Jack, that the HPC would welcome him even on a short-term basis, as the HPC would then request of the mayor at that time, that Jack be appointed as our new council liaison, since our beloved Roger Gay would not be running again. In regards to the, sorry, these discussions and notifications were duly documented and requested over a month ago. Also, please note, since three of our members have attended national historic conferences, one of our goals at the HPC is engaging young people in the preservation of our historic places, nationally known as youth heritage, and have been seeking a youth as a member. In regards to the HPC needs, not only have we been seeking to fill our vacancies, we are no longer a commission at need. We are now having public hearings on the second Wednesday of every month, and at times have needed to meet on the fourth Wednesday, due to hearing an increased number of COA applications. We have also had a few hearings postponed due to lack of quorum, abstains, or recusals, hence the immediate need of the appointment of new members. Having a lack of quorum is a disservice to the historic district owners and a timely response to their projects and contractors, but also a burden to the Planning Department, due process, and extra payments to the Journal Tribune notifications. Thank you for your consideration of appointing Jack Chinchat as an associate member to the HPC, and I welcome any questions that you may have in your deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Roach, Mr. Kevin Roach. Sir, yes, and your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, hello. Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road, property owner at the Millbrook Industrial Park. I am not just, if he's watching, I am not the Kevin Roach of Eco Maine. He is a great guy, very smarter than I am, runs a bigger organization than I ever would, but to that constituent, Lynn Copeland's your ward counselor in Ward Four, sorry Lynn, but anyway, if he's out there, he didn't leave his number, that's what that was. I wanted to read off just our general taxpayer concern of the issue you're going to be discussing tonight. Saco is paying $24,000 a month, the Saco schools, for an empty building. They're paying it July, August, and now September. They signed a 10-year lease with the pre-K program to rent the toddle-in space in the Spring Hill Industrial Park. Nobody, to my knowledge, in the city departments were asked if there was, or checked in with if there's any restrictions in that property before the lease was signed. The mayor, your mayor, was attending one of the executive sessions, but I don't think you're at liberty to give out the address, or were asked that question, but again, that's a tough question, because you don't, it was debated about whether you can disclose. The building, there is now an electrical report stating that the building has an exposed main power line and an ungrounded pool, deadly for anyone. And then pre-K did find other locations, but as of September, now today, the schools have paid the $72,000 for total for an empty building, not including all our friendly lawyers that I see around here, that probably totals well over that, equivalent of, I think, maybe three or four teacher salaries at this point. And then the final fact is, your school board votes on the superintendent contract come December for renewal. A lot of this infighting between city and schools, it's not becoming of Saco. City hall, city has their roles, schools have their roles. But what's been quiet, now that it's all been discussed of the location, what's been very quiet is, what are the facts of toddle-in? Where do they stand on all this? There's a letter in your packet, I think it's page 161, that they finally, you know, have spoken in response to the city shutdown, and they said, they said the city, they said the schools contacted them, and they were reluctant. Says it right there in black and white. They, schools contacted them, they were reluctant to move forward. Now, the schools have said in a public forum, they contacted us. So, that's a big deal, like, which one? Because, as we all know, business owners are responsible for their, where they're located, what the covenants are they're at, what the codes are, it's the business owner responsible. So, who's doing the research there? And then the other thing, now that it's been, there's no reason it's a secret of when this all started. When did this discussion start? Superintendent, in his affidavit, says it was the spring, but then, in the notice of pre-K parents, on May 9th, it was a few months of negotiations. All right, I'll give the benefit of the doubt that spring could start early in Maine, but we'll give it that, but when and who started this? That's the question you get asked going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Very good. And next up is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Gay, Gay made the motion, and Counselor Copeland seconded the motion. The consent agenda is now on the floor. Does any counselor wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes 7-0. Thank you. Next up, I would like to, is the administrative appeal regarding the electrical code. I'd like to call up Attorney Keith Jakes, who will be acting as the council advisor on this matter.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Before we begin, as I've done before, I just want to disclose that I have a pre-existing professional conflict, so I will be recusing myself from any consideration of this, and I'll be sitting in the gallery. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. You don't have to change seats, but if that makes you feel more comfortable, then please do so.
I think it's the most appropriate. Thank you.
So, if you... So, if you don't mind, I'll take a deep breath for a moment. So, let me again point out to the council, as there are six councilors, I know we had a good time the last time, Counselor Smart decided to recuse himself, not looking for any tie votes, thank you very much, if there is a tie. I either may plan on, on voting, or actually allow, allow the motion to fail. And so, let me just start off by asking the council if there's, and also the parties, if there's any objection to my presiding over this meeting, first of all. So, to the council, any objection, or to the, the parties, Attorney Murphy or Attorney Fouts? No problems? Is there any problem? I have to say that, that during this process, I actually have been in executive session on both sides. However, I have not been informed on anything associated with the, with the decision on this, except the material presented by the city administrator, which represents the material produced by each side. And also, and the subsequent material that you received today, which came to us from Attorney Jakes. So, at this time, does either side wish me to recuse my vote on this matter? Or is there any counselor that would like me to recuse my vote? Seeing none? Okay, the next item up is to say that we've received additionally from Attorney Jakes, I think through Mr. Sutherland, a guideline associated with this appeal. It has four points to it. Point number four is the actual decision to be made. I'd like to point out that under three, there are five points to be examined. Points 3A, B, and C are, are factors associated with, with achieving a final decision, but are more in general, whereas 3D and 3E should have some discussion associated with them, because they are, they would be substantive in the, in identifying the meaning of the decision that the council makes in selecting either 4A or 4B. So, you all have those sheets, and I hope understand those remarks. I want to make an additional point, that the council is making a finding that is on the record and being recorded, and that this could very well be evidence in, in a superior court proceeding. So, next is, following the procedure, the, let me point out that we are going to be conducting this by first asking the school department to provide an opening statement in support of its appeal. Attorney Fouts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I'm Adrian Fouts. I'm an attorney at Drummond Woodsom, and I represent the school department here for this appeal that we initiated on August 1st, appealing the electrical inspector's decision of July 30th to depower the site at 5 Wiley Road. First, let me thank you for your time, and for, can you hear me okay?
I can. I, I noticed there was something I didn't ask at the very beginning, and that is, does either, do you or, does Attorney Murphy object to the record that the council received from Mr. Sutherland?
No objection.
No objection? No objection.
Do you have an objection on that 277-page?
Yes.
Document? Thank you very much. So, please.
Thank you. And thank you for your time today, and for your time reviewing the record, which is admittedly fairly extensive. The reason for that being the context of the larger dispute that we're all familiar with, related to the lease agreement, and also the fact that the school department has affirmatively sought approval from the city, the approvals that the city is requiring on four different, from four different agencies of the city, and that information has also been included. So, that contributed to the volume, but I think was important context. The issue for the council tonight is actually a fairly discreet issue. You know, there have been comments about the, the background, about the lease agreement, and that really isn't what is before the council tonight. What's before the council is, is the limited issue of whether the electrical inspector acted properly on July 30th, under the covenants that apply to the 5 Wiley Road site, or, and/or, under the city's electrical code, when he made the decision to depower the site at 5 Wiley Road. As you know, it's the school department's position that that decision was made in error. There's one primary reason for that position, that really implicates both the covenants and the electrical code, and is dispositive of the question of the applicability of both. And that is that, at the time that the depowering decision was made on July 30th, the city knew that the school department was seeking alternative space for its pre-K program, and was not occupying the 5 Wiley Road site. Excuse me. And as I say, that's, that's really dispositive of both questions, because under the covenants and under the electrical code, there would have had to have been a use by the school department in order to give the electrical inspector authority to exercise depowering. I've included information in tab two of my submission on behalf of the school department that lays out the communications between my colleague, Bill Stockmeyer, who also represents the school department, and the city solicitor, Mr. Murphy, from July 24th of this year, which really shows that there was an acknowledgement by the school department of receipt of the July 19th notice letter from the city to the school department, indicating, and further, that the, there was indication from the school department that it was seeking alternative space for the pre-K program. You'll also see in that correspondence that we asked for a quote, "extension of time" to remove some items of personal property from 5 Wiley Road, and then Mr. Murphy consulted with the city and graciously confirmed that the city was in agreement with allowing some additional time to remove items of personal property. So, needless to say, I think it came as quite a surprise when the depowering occurred six days later. It, it was, for the stated reason of quote, "summarily abating the school's use," when the city knew that the school was not using the premises, and even if it was, there are far less extreme means of, of addressing the issue. It's also laid out in our papers that there were some other events around the same period of time, July 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, where the school board and the school department took steps to make clear to the public that it intended to seek alternative space for the pre-K program for the year. On July 22nd, Superintendent DePatsy sent a message to pre-K parents, which specifically says that the, the school department would be seeking alternative space. On July 23rd, there was a vote of the school board, specifically authorizing the superintendent to seek that alternative space, while simultaneously attempting to reach agreement with the city regarding the 5 Wiley site. And then on July 24th, there was a message from the school board to pre-K parents that reiterates that intention. So, as of the date of the depowering, the city knew that because it was requiring certain approvals, the school department's contemplated use under the lease was not full steam ahead, which is how it's characterized, characterized in the city's reply. As I say, that's, that's significant, because it, a use by the school department is what, what would trigger both the covenants and the electrical code. Under the covenants, the article that is relevant for, for purposes of this appeal is Article 7.1. That article only applies to purchasers or non-related occupants. The school department is not... is not an occupant, because it is not occupying the space. And therefore, Article 7.1 does not apply to the school department and cannot be invoked against it. Even if that article did apply, there are requirements to invoking it, one of which is a 30-day notice period. The school department was given 10 days' notice, and the depowering occurred on the 11th day. And a similar point is that Article 7.1 only allows for self-help, where there's an alleged violation of the covenants that continues unabated after proper notice. Here, there was no use by the school department, so there was no alleged violation that continued unabated. And a separate... I want to just, as an aside, say that I don't... I'm not putting before you the question of whether the school department's contemplated use under the lease, in fact, violates the covenants. I don't think that's an issue you need to decide. I think you can decide Article 7.1 and its applicability without reaching that issue. That particular question is actually a question that is subject of another appeal, that's pending before the zoning board of appeals, and in my view, is not before the council So, on Article 7.1, even if it applied, even if it were properly invoked, it does not allow the extreme self-help that the city exercised in this case. 7.1, and I know I'll have it in your packet, so I won't read it, but it relates to abatement of physical conditions that violate covenants by physically entering the space to correct those violations. There's nothing in that article... There isn't even an implication in that article that the city has any plenary authority to take whatever steps it deems necessary to stop an alleged violation. Such broad self-help is likewise not recognized under Maine law. The basic concept of self-help is, of course, recognized under case law in Maine, which Mr. Murphy has cited some of those cases in his papers. All of those cases are factually very distinguishable from these circumstances, and none relate to a municipality's ability to exercise self-help in the context of covenants that apply to real property. So, for all of those reasons, because it doesn't apply to the school department's use, because it wasn't properly invoked, and because it does not provide this extreme self-help remedy, Article 7.1 is not a justification for the electrical inspector's decision. Similarly, under the electrical code, which is the other justification that is cited by the city for the decision, Section 8.13 provides for depowering when the electrical inspector determines that a use of electrical equipment or its installation is found to be dangerous to human life or property. The background and the context, I think, are really important here. I think it's very significant that no health or safety concerns were raised with either Toddlin or the school department prior to the time of depowering. And that's a period of approximately three months, at least, when the city knew of the lease, to the time of the depowering. Additionally, both letters, and they're somewhat different, that were sent by the city to Toddlin and to the school department are silent as to any health and safety concerns. If the city had a health and safety concern during those three months, it didn't raise the issue. It never requested inspection, or explicitly or implicitly stated that it had any safety concerns. On those facts alone, there isn't support for the position that the decision is justified as a health and safety concern. Furthermore, the city cited... Did cite a general safety concern to Central Maine Power when it requested the depowering. It also stated that it needed the opportunity to inspect the premises. So, no specific safety issue was cited, just a need to inspect the premises. That is both an admission that no inspection had happened, which would be necessary for there to be a finding by the inspector of a health and safety issue. And it's also at odds with what the city cited to both the school department and Toddlin as the reason for depowering the site. Based on that record, it really makes no sense that the depowering... Excuse me. It makes no sense that the city had health and safety concerns so severe to require a depowering, but that it had never mentioned them to any of the parties who might be bringing children into that building. For a period of about three months, there was ample opportunity for those issues to be raised, and they were not. And that all suggests that the safety issues really seem to be after-the-fact justifications for the depowering. There's a fair amount of information in the materials that you have that relate to that, that relate to after-the-fact findings and concerns and steps that have been taken. And if such issues exist and have been addressed, the school department is glad that those have been addressed. I want to touch on the fact, though, that after-the-fact issues and subsequent steps taken cannot be used to justify the electrical inspector's decision as of July 30th, which is what the issue before you is. What's critical and what's relevant is, what were the facts that existed at the time of that decision, and what was the true basis for that decision? The school department isn't really in a position to comment substantively on those after-the-fact findings, the concerns and the sort of technical electrical information. But I do want to... And as I say, I don't think it's relevant to this determination tonight. But I do want to make a couple of points about them, because I know you have a fair amount of material that relate to those issues. First, many of those issues relate to the pool area of the premises at Five Wiley Road, and that area is explicitly accepted from the leased premises under the lease. So, the pool doesn't in any way relate to the contemplated use by the school department of Five Wiley Road. Additionally, I submitted today, and I believe went through... It went through Mr. Jakes to the council, a letter from the electrician who did work for Toddlin during this time period, following the depowering. And that includes his view that there were no health and safety or life-threatening conditions on the premises, just small issues that have since been addressed. Based on all of those facts, there is no record to support depowering the premises either under the covenants or under the electrical code. And just as there needs to be a use under the covenants to implicate Article 7.1, there needs to be a use by the school department under Section 8.13 of the electrical code to justify the depowering. And because the school department was not using the premises on July 30th, and the city knew that, there was no basis to depower the site. In closing, the electrical inspector didn't have authority under either the covenants or the electrical code to depower the site with respect to the school department. The decision was in error under either rationale, and I expect that the council can see the risk in sanctioning such extreme self-help, especially without legal justification, and where it appears in the broader context to be a pretext for interfering with the lease agreement. So, I ask that the decision be overturned.
Thank you very much, Attorney Fouts.
Thank you.
Attorney Murphy, the City of Saukow responds.
Good evening. And if any of the councilors have questions, as I go along, please feel free to interrupt me. I'd rather answer your inquiry as it arises than not have you address it and wonder. First, I don't think this is as broad an inquiry as has been painted. The electrical code seems... And by the way, this is an appeal of the electrical code. In the electrical code, the question before you is this Section 87-2, which says, "When the use of an equipment or installations..." And we would read installations there, to I say mean the building, "...is found to be dangerous to human life, then the electrical inspector, with the approval of the code enforcement officer, may... shall be empowered to have the premises disconnected." So, the very discreet question before you tonight is, when the code enforcement officer and the city's electrical inspector contacted Central Maine Power on July 29th, was the Toddlin premises itself dangerous to humans? Could people get hurt? So, that request was sent by both Mr. Lambert and Mr. De Rocheur. It cited two reasons. It cited the electrical code and the park covenants, and that becomes important later. But let's just focus on the electrical code for now. Mr. De Rocheur has said in his affidavit, he said, "Look, I did inspect. I inspected the Toddlin's file at City Hall. I did an aerial search from Google. I looked at what I could look at that was available. We're not at liberty to walk into the building." He looked at what we had, and based on that, he saw certain conditions that, in his mind, created danger to people using the premises. There had been no inspections since 2005. It's a 14-year-old building. No one from the city had gone back in. He sees a pool, but there's never been an inspection of the pool. There's no electrical permit for the pool. He sees that the building has been converted from propane to natural gas. No one called us up. No one said, "Come back and take a look at this." "Oh, but don't worry, natural gas. What could possibly go wrong?" He also realizes, because he's an experienced electrician, that there are differing standards, that electricians apply differing standards between schools that are going to house public children and private daycares. He looks at this confluence of factors, and he reaches a decision, in conjunction with the code enforcement officer, that those themselves present risk of injury to people using the premises. They send this information to CMP. CMP accepts it. So, at least CMP, at that point, feels there's adequate basis to justify the depowering. The next day, CMP is on-site. Five minutes, the building's powered down. What you're not hearing about is that the folks from Toddlin, who are here tonight, they were upset that the building had been powered down. So, they actually file an appeal to the Maine Public Utilities Commission, and this material should be in your packets. So, the Maine Public Utilities Commission has already had a chance to look at this electrical danger issue. And the Public Utilities Commission, at the request of the owner, looks at what happened, and they decide, "No, you know what? The city officials did act appropriately." So, you have three sets of parties. You have a master electrician with over... Marcel, how many years of experience do you have?
As an electrician, over 30. As a master electrician, 22. And as an inspector, 19.
Tremendous experience as a master electrician. We have Central Maine Power. Oh, what do they know about electricity? And then, we have the Maine PUC, which is the governing body of Central Maine Power. All three of those parties conclude, "Yep, you know what? There's some risk there at Toddlin. This was the right thing to do. Power it down." Now, it's not like the building is shut down permanently. Powering it down gives you opportunity to catch your breath and go take a look. It brings the parties to the table. You've heard some comments earlier about, "Oh, well, the city, you were heavy-handed. We were leaving the building. Well, they moved in without our knowledge. And yes, they did tell us they were intending to leave. But I can tell you, having represented landlords in the past, intending to leave and out are two different things, okay? They're night and day. And when property is taken out, they're out. You can re-lease it to someone else. But intending to leave is just a hope and a prayer for a landlord. We had to go on what we knew. Yes, we thought the schools were leaving, but we were making a point that, no, you're leaving, and you can't get back in, because there isn't going to be power in the building. Because we need time to get in there and look at it." All this after-the-fact complaining by the schools. They never contacted us before they signed that lease and said, "Hey, come take a look at this building we're going in. It looks kind of nice on the outside. Maybe you ought to take a look on the inside, because we're going to have kids there. We ought to make sure it's safe." Nope, not done. So, they move in, they move people, they move equipment. The people come out, but the equipment stays. So, we go forward with depowering. Was Marcel justified? I think you're going to find, based on those facts, as they existed on July 30th, were adequate. CMP thought they were adequate. The Maine PUC thought they were adequate. Now, the school department doesn't want to talk about what happened after July 30th. Of course, they don't want to talk about it, because all the things we subsequently learned verify that Marcel was actually forward-thinking, that actually there was more evidence that we weren't aware of as of yet. A lot of this unfolded as time went on, and you'll see that in the affidavit. But critical things start happening. So, on August 8th, Marcel, myself, and another city official decide to go to the premises and see what we can see. We can't go in the building. We can't go out past the fencing. But we decide, we'll actually go right up to the building and take a look at it. And there, we discovered that there's a significant problem with where the main power line comes into the building. There were some changes that occurred after the approval of construction that resulted in the main power line being located very near where the children's playground is. And because of some fencing in the playground, we're not quite sure why, but we think it's a very tight space, and when people are in that area, they actually hit the side of the building a couple times. Well, they hit on both sides of this main power line. It's essentially a live wire and a plastic tube. It's a relatively thin piece of plastic. You look at it, and had anyone hit that the wrong way, they would have been killed. Life-threatening condition. We looked at that. We were a little concerned. So, we immediately alerted the owner, so that they could correct it. And they did, to their credit. By the way, let's give credit where credit's due. The Toddlin has stepped forward and rectified these conditions as we learned of them. And to the city's credit, as soon as we learned of them, we flagged the Toddlin. We let them know. So, this main power entry point was incredibly dangerous. Toddlin has come in and put bollards in front of it to protect it, so it can't be hit. On August 15th, the Toddlin's electrician calls, if I got this... I think I have it right, and said, "Hey, there might be a mis-wiring of the pool. The pool isn't properly grounded." So, remember, I mentioned earlier, on July 29th, Marcel could look at the city file and say, "That pool had never been inspected. There was no electrical permit for that pool. Had we had opportunity to go in, we would have learned that the pool was miswired. We subsequently learned it. And as I understand it, the risk is that electricity can backcharge into the pool." Imagine. What's shocking... That's the wrong word. What's significant is that condition had existed since 2005. My children attended Toddlin. We always had a very high opinion of it. They ran an excellent facility. I don't think anyone knew that this condition existed, and we're not blaming the Toddlin. I think they're as troubled by it as we are. But my children are at risk. Maybe some of the folks in this audience, their childrens were at risk. So, we learned that. And in August 28th, the city finally has a chance to send code enforcement and the electrical inspector inside the building. And we learn there are additional problems, including, if I get this right, the heating equipment that fed from the gas, the propane tank. equipment that fed from the gas, the propane tank, was also miswired, which created the risk that, again, electricity could backfeed to the propane tank. One can imagine what that would do. So again, to Toddlin's credit, these issues are being corrected. The point of all this is simply to say, what didn't seem to the school department to be big issues, they say it wasn't justified on July 29th, despite what CMP thought and despite what the main PUC thought, we think it was enough. But it turns out, there was even more we didn't know about. But for the fact that we powered it down, we might still not know about those things. So I would argue that this isn't government overreaching. This isn't government being heavy-handed. This is government doing what we darn well ought to ask of government. We're here to protect our citizens. And if we acted a little heavy-handed, well, I'm not shedding any tears about it, folks, I'll tell you. Because we did the right thing. Marcel judged this situation. He's the most experienced person in the room. We followed that. And so we think it was the right thing to do. So in the strict issue of, was Marcel justified? Did he believe and find that this property was dangerous? I'd argue he did. And the PUC agreed. We have this other issue, though, of the park covenants. So I mentioned earlier that the letter that we sent to CMP on July 29th actually referenced two issues. It referenced the electrical issues, but it also referenced the park covenants. So, and in fact, that's why Mr. Lambert also signed that letter. The city administration had express orders to the code enforcement officer, enforce the covenants. "I'm directing you to enforce the covenants." So Mr. Lambert's superior has given him an instruction. "We look at how we can accomplish that. We believe the park covenants were being violated." We don't think that issue really is appropriate to discuss tonight, for a couple reasons. But if you want to, and it's been raised, I will talk about it. But understand that Mr. Lambert was also acting, in his capacity as a city official, to effectuate the enforcement of the park covenants. So he also was involved, and doing it at the direction of the city administration. Were the park covenants violated? We sure think so. Let's get clear about the park covenants. They apply to everybody in the park. They apply to owners, and they apply to occupants. And occupants would be parties that lease, parties that are in the building on a free ride, however they're there. We intended that those park covenants apply to folks. I don't know how you can say you're not in the building if you have a lease on it. I don't know how you can say tonight you're not in the building when you have equipment in it. In my world, that's a lease. That's occupancy. Sure as heck, Toddlin thinks it's occupancy. They're taking a check for it. A pretty good check each month. Good for them. So I'd say they were in the building. The covenants are clear. They apply to people, including lessies like the school department. They apply even if the school department says, "Hey, Attorney Murphy, don't worry, we're leaving. Doesn't matter. You're still in the building. You still have a lease. Still applies to you. The covenants are absolutely unmistakably clear. Nonprofits are not welcome unless they have first come to you, the city council, and asked for permission." Do any of you remember the school board showing up here asking for permission? I'm seeing nodding heads. I don't remember that. Because they didn't. The covenants are clear. Why didn't the school department ask us for permission before they moved in? Did you get permission before they signed the lease? Did they ask you? No. They just signed the lease. Now, I don't know why they did that without checking, but the covenants are unmistakable. They're in the deed. They're in the registry of deeds. They can be found. Toddlin was certainly aware of them because they bought the property, and it's right there in their deed. And the covenants say you can't be a non-taxable entity. Why? Because you build industrial parks to generate tax revenue. You want property taxes, and you want business taxes. Well, the argument is, Toddlin's still going to pay the taxes. No, they're not. The school department is paying the property taxes because it's a triple-net lease. So they cut the check. The check goes to Toddlin. Toddlin sends it back to the city. So it's kind of a shell game. "Oh, wait, but you, the city, are actually paying the taxes. That pays the school. That pays the Toddlin. That pays back to you." So there's no new tax money coming to the city of Saco. You just shifted it from one pocket to the other. Those are your taxes. They're not new taxes. So one of your main purposes has been thwarted. So this argument that they're still paying taxes, that's a fantasy. But also, there's no business taxes being paid. The school isn't going to pay taxes on the equipment that's in that property. Do equipment taxes matter? Sure, they do. And we have a property in Millbrook that's, what, a bio lab? Good God, what must they be paying in property, personal property taxes? We register vehicles from Enterprise Rental Car. It's not property tax. It's a business tax, an excise tax. These taxes matter to us. So the covenant is written specifically to protect that. We lose those taxes. So clearly, the use was something that wasn't allowed. And they would have been told that, I guess. Or, or, you, as the political body, could have decided, had you been given the chance, "You know what? We know what the taxes that could be generated, but we're willing to sacrifice those taxes because we believe in the schools. We think the school's use is appropriate." Had they done that, you would have had that option to weigh the taxes versus the school's goals. But again, they didn't come to you and ask you that. So all we have is this situation where we have lost taxes. So our view is, the covenants have been violated because of the type of use of the schools. The covenants do apply to the Toddlin and to the schools. And the last question becomes, does Mr. Lambert have authority, then, to effectuate the remedies that are set out in the covenants, particularly section 7.1? Of course he does. Who else would enforce them? Certainly, the school department isn't going to. Park covenants would be enforced by Mr. Lambert through Mr. Sutherland's office, in conjunction with my assistance, or another attorney. They're the natural parties that enforce land use matters here in the city. Now, there's an argument that self-help is too much. Why? There's case after case that allows parties to use self-help. What part of the covenant says we can't? It was expressly written to allow for self-help. And actually, this self-help is relatively de minimis. It powers down the building for a modest amount of time, but it doesn't prevent an immediate repowering when the fear or the condition has been resolved. In fact, it's quite simple. I was amazed how quickly CMP can down-power a building. They go up, they take a little hook, they go like this. The wire's disconnected. It's that fast, which means you can put it back on that fast. It's not like we had an armed guard there. It's not like we bolted, shut the doors, or did some physical damage to the property. This was an easy remedy that could be easily reinstalled when we felt it was safe, when we felt it was certain that the schools had left. So there's no language in there. And I'm pretty confident that your, our, city's use of that authority would be upheld were this to go before the Superior Court. So I thank you for your time. I certainly will answer any questions if you'd like.
Thank you, Attorney Murphy. The next step, in fact, is a question period of the council on both sides. And that is, the council may ask any clarifying questions of the two parties. Only if necessary, the council may also ask clarifying questions of other individuals present at this meeting. But any such questions must be limited to clarification of the evidence that has been presented by the parties. No new evidence should be elicited. Counselor Archer.
Yes, just a couple of questions for Attorney Murphy.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Let me get closer. Got all these documents here. Your memory would be better than mine because I've had about a week to review this. Sorry. Attorney Fouts had identified about the, what did she say specifically? No use. I remember reading, and again, you'd be the expert because you wrote the email, when did you give permission for the school department to go back in the building to grab their stuff?
So I think I wrote that email, I would say it's the 24th or 25th. I engaged in some discussions with Attorney Bill Stockmar. We had depowered the building, but we were, again, we were somewhat in the dark, but we understood there to be some equipment that obviously they might need to get out.
So...
And we didn't know when the building would be repowered. So we had to kind of figure out, how are we going to, are we going to let them in to get that equipment or not?
And it's my understanding you did allow it, them to go back in and grab it. So what they went in to grab was their own equipment, so in effect, they were using it as, at the least, as a storage unit, a very expensive storage unit. If they went in to go get their equipment, wouldn't that be considered use?
Oh, I think as soon as you sign a lease, you have use of the entire building.
Okay, so a lot of those arguments were, "We can't make any decisions based on the no-use" aspect of it, but in fact, you had given permission for Saco staff, or Saco school boards, or school staff to go in and grab their stuff. So they were effectively using it at that time of the de-energization?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah.
Another clarifying question. Is it common practice to conduct an inspection full or summary when a change in use is presented? I can reword that again. Is it a common practice to conduct an inspection?
Yes.
Full or summary, like any type of, whatever his expressions are, when a change in use is presented, especially when it's introducing 150 Saco school students into a building?
So I asked to give that specific question. His answer was, "Yes, that's standard practice. We would go in, and particularly, you've got a building that's 15 years old, so you want to, you want to take advantage of the opportunity to go in and see, have things changed? Has the owner expanded a use, changed a use, put in equipment or new facilities that you weren't aware of?" It's not uncommon for people to alter their building after they get a certificate of occupancy and add, so a homeowner might expand their deck. They might put a room in the basement. There's, in a commercial facility, there can be all kinds of changes. So yes, very common.
And then last question for clarification. It was my understanding that we did have a staffer, a staffer on site. Her office was moved there. I was aware of this. Again, I'm just asking for clarification. I was just wondering, when she moved out, was it the day of depowering? Or is this information incorrect? I'm okay with that. It's being addressed.
That would be news to us.
Huh?
So a response to Counselor Archer's question?
Can you state your question again, please?
Yes, I'm aware of a certain, should I just say the name? Is it, okay, Julie Smith. I was aware that she was operating on the facility during that timeframe. When did she move out?
So her stuff was moved in on July 1st.
Okay.
With other, most of the stuff that we ordered, as it came in over the next 20 or so days. And then, when we couldn't go in there more, she was remote for most of that time. So she went remote when we got the letter from Mr. Murphy.
She went remote when you got the letter, so that means as soon as you got the letter, you stopped her from working on site.
Well, they had to go in and get some stuff in there, and Mike Garrity would check on the building, too, to make sure, because we were mostly concerned about mold when the electricity was shut off.
Was Mr. Garrity and Ms. Smith at risk while she was working there?
I didn't, no.
Okay. Was Ms., were the city school members at risk by working there?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Would you say an answer, Mr. DeRocher?
Yeah. One of the major reasons I felt that power had to be disconnected was because of the primary lineside conductors that were going to the meter that Mr. Murphy spoke about. Had they been hit, and then once we, once I saw the gas pipe from that aerial view that I did with Google Earth and everything, saw they had changed over to natural gas, instantly I started wondering, well, was the gas bonded properly? There was an explosion years ago in another state, which caused a lawsuit, which caused the gas code in the state of Maine to require it to be bonded. Never, I was never invited in. So, and as it turned out, it was not bonded properly. So, yeah, she was at risk.
One more to that, just...
All right, Counselor Archer.
When your affidavits, your affidavits say grave risk. How often do city inspectors or people in your profession use those terms? Is it only at the extreme grave risk?
Yeah, I don't, I don't use it often.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to my left? Counselor Copeland? Yes, please.
So we need to keep the focus very narrow because we can go on about this whole situation and the way it's been handled. Makes my head spin. So when we talk about occupant in the covenant, it's defined as, occupant under the covenant is defined as a lot owner, lessie, or optionee of the declarant, or any other person or entity other than the declarant, in lawful possession of a lot with permission of the declarant. I would say a lease counts as lawful possession. I don't understand how you can say that they were not in possession. Now that we're hearing there was actually a person in there, your argument is flat. So, so we're trying not to just sit around and think about all the children that could be in this building when there's been a change from bottled gas to natural gas without inspection. Just makes my head spin. And the main PUC has agreed with the city electrician. The, in the, in Mr. DeRocher's affidavit, he states that main power line not properly protected. The current transformer serving the building has the potential of delivering 240 volts with a 38,540 amp AIC. I don't know what AIC is.
The AIC rating is basically the amount of current that you can get from that transformer before the lineside at CMP's transformer would trip. Long story short, what you have is, this is the lineside of the meter. There's no overcurrent device. You have all of CMP's power coming straight to your meter, and it would take in excess of 38,000 amps to trip the CMP's line at the distribution center.
Wow.
That would...
And you put in your affidavit that this is sufficient power to vaporize metals and cause instant death. And what part of this do you not think it is an emergency and must be acted on immediately? I understand that nobody saw it, and people were bumping into it or whatever, and, you know, I'm very happy that the Toddlin took care of it. But how can you imagine in any sense of reality that this is not absolutely dangerous and caused for that electricity to be shut off? I'm proud that we did the right thing.
Attorney Fouts?
Thank you. I agree, we need to keep the focus narrow because obviously, there's a much broader context here. But the broad context is important to some extent. Because I think if, if there was...
Why isn't the microphone working?
Is it working? No.
You have to be right on top of it.
Can you hear me like that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Because the reality is that when you look at the facts, it's quite evident that this was a pretext to interfere with the lease agreement. If there was a concern of this extreme nature, why would you call CMP and go through an administrative process? Why would your first step be to call CMP and go through an administrative process to turn off the power? Wouldn't you call the owners of the building and say, "Don't go in that building. There's an emergency"? None of the facts support that as of July 30th, there was such an urgent concern for safety. What the facts show, that all happened after, after the fact. What the facts show is that, and as stated from the city's attorney in the communications to the school department and to Toddlin, is that the reason for depowering was to stop the school department from being able to perform under the lease. And that, that's really what the reason was. All of these other things are after the fact justification.
I thought we were staying focused on the actual electrical piece.
Right, and I also want to stay focused in that this is the question period in that we are coming up to a period of statements where we're going to stop inquiring of the two respondents and speak directly to how the council itself feels to come to the conclusion of the hearing.
Well, that's why I was asking about occupancy.
And I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Very informative.
Could I respond on the occupancy issue?
Please do, Attorney Fouts.
Thank you. The definition that you read of occupant, it says a lot owner, lessy, or optionee, but then it says, or any other person or entity other than the declarant, in lawful possession. So my reading of this is that the word possession modifies, modifies all the preceding words. So you would have to be in possession of, actually occupying the space in order for this to be implicated. Now, what's important about the communications that my office had with Mr. Murphy is that we were specifically responding to the 10-day notice letter. That was the specific intent of our, of the email that you'll see at tab 2. It was extension of time in response to the cease and desist. So I have to say, it feels like a gotcha. You know, yes, you can keep your stuff there, and we all agree, we understand you're seeking alternative space, but now we're going to say, oh, because you kept your stuff there, we get to, we get to say that you were violating the covenants, and we get to exercise extreme self-help. It was a professional courtesy, in my view, between council to, to attempt to avoid a situation where we were moving equipment twice. We had to, you know, move it out to some storage facility and then move it again to, when we find the space, because, you know, we were under a tight time period to get the program started. So, I don't think it's true that there was a health and safety emergency, because I think if there was, I would like to think the city would have informed people who might actually be entering the building.
Yes, Counselor Copeland, in fact, it might well be that Attorney Murphy could have a response.
I'd be fine with that.
I've now heard two times that, that this powering down was a pretext to interfere with the lease. If it is, it's the most inept effort to interfere with the lease, because ever since we powered the building down, we've been in continuous contact with Toddlin to explain to them what the problems were, to assist them, to quickly correct them. And in fact, we just sent them a letter saying, "You did a great job, thank you. We, we're gonna be able to let you get your building back open." So it has, this argument that it has to do with the lease, no. It had to do with the safety of the building, which we found out on, beginning in August, how bad it was. But when I communicated with Attorney Stockmeyer, yes, we were trying to accommodate the schools to move out, but that didn't eliminate the danger of the structure. We still had obligations to go back into that building and check it, because even if they left, the Toddlin is sure as heck gonna want someone else in there. The danger didn't go away, we just finally started to be able to spend time to look at it. So it wasn't like we could, oh, well, I got an email from Attorney Stockmeyer, and don't worry, we're moving out. Well, I'm sorry, but you've started this ball rolling, we now need to complete it. And we're darn well gonna.
So, thank you very much. Some very clarifying questions. You have another, Counselor Copeland?
One is about being a landlord, and I can assure you that the district court is filled with FED cases, forcible entry and detainer. So, I have to agree, and I'm a landlord, and I've had to go through this process, just because you say you're going to leave doesn't mean you're going to, at all. And, so that's just one point. But the other one, I want to ask you, so the, the letter that you were copied on that was giving 30-day notice to the Toddlin, did you receive that by ordinary course in the mail?
It was sent to, I believe, Mr. Stockmeyer. We received the June 19th...
So, you have notice?
It was directed to Toddlin.
I don't care who it's directed to. You received it, and you understood what it said.
There's no dispute about receipt of that letter.
Well, you're bringing up the 30-day notice, so I'm just trying to understand that better.
Yeah, receipt of a letter directed to someone else is a very different thing than legal notice under the covenants, so...
I understand the technicalities in Superior Court, but we're in Saco City Hall, and I just want everyone to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions to my left? Counselor Johnston?
Okay, let's see if I can remember my question. I mean, we spoke about keeping this to a narrow purview here, but yet, we continue to go into broader areas, which I would say, I believe, is probably best suited for Superior Court. So, I will go back and ask Mr. DeRozier, sticking just to chapter 87. In your affidavit, it stated that you did an inspection of the city file in a Google Earth search, is that correct?
Correct.
And so, in your capacity as electrical inspector, you felt as though there was enough there for you to make a determination that there was potential for a life-threatening possibility?
There was significant threatening, life-threatening situation existed. In fact, if you, reading my affidavit approximately a month or so earlier, we had a service that had exploded on one road.
Right.
Once again, on the lineside of the service, which caused the metal to vaporize and blow right off the building. So, yeah, it, there was significant life-threatening situation was there.
And so, again, in your capacity, that's, that's up to your judgment, right?
Correct.
That's part of your job. So, on that alone, I would say that, you know, he executed his job, and I don't really understand why we're arguing this at all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
So, Counselor Woodrow?
So, if I understand this correctly, the schools got the key on July 1st.
Correct.
Sometime in the next few days thereafter, Ms. Smith, who's already been acknowledged by other counselors, moved her personal property into the building, was operating out of the building. There were numerous deliveries of chairs, whatever, desks, whatever else the school had purchased and was being delivered to Toddlin over the next two, three, four weeks, before it was powered down. I'm sorry, Ms. Fouts, but if that isn't use and occupation, I don't know what is. You've got people there, you've got deliveries being made there. You're using the building. You're not just coincidentally there, you're there for that.
Before you go to the next question, do you have a response, Attorney Fouts?
Yes, the, so the relevant, the relevant date is the date of depowering. What existed as of the date of depowering? On July 30th, the city had known for six days that, in response to its July 19th letter, and as represented by council, you know, not, not just a person who's a tenant and has nowhere else to go and might say they're leaving, but as council, with professional courtesies, that the school department would not be using the space, would be seeking alternative space. And the only use that existed as of that date was a use that the city had agreed to for an interim period of only personal property.
But again, they were still, even after it was depowered, and they were allowing you to enter somewhat at risk in the dark, not knowing where the material was in the building, I'm assuming, they were still taking things out of the building after it was depowered. So there must have been a lot of stuff there already. If, now we're two or three weeks in, we've had numerous deliveries, the people are now working remotely, but it's taking us several weeks to get the stuff out even after it's been depowered, that's still using the building. I mean, if I'm over at a storage place at the other end of the industrial park, I'm using it, you know, I'm taking stuff out. They're gonna be expecting rent, they obviously have been paid rent, from everything we've heard. There's use there. Now, is it usable? Is there a certificate of occupancy? No, I get that. But from the standpoint of, are we paying for the space? Do we have a key to access the space? Whether the lights are on or not, we're using the property, whether it's just as a storage barn at this point, or not, as this other stuff gets cleared up. And again, one of the things noted in one of the letters we received today was that the ground fault protection was required for the washer receptacle. So if they, staff had been doing any cleaning or whatever and utilized that washer, there was a shock hazard there by it not being properly grounded and isolated on a ground fault circuit. So there was risk to the people there had they used some of the items in the building as they were intended to be used.
So, Counselor, the question?
No, there's no question. It's just a statement, reading this stuff, and I think it needs to be said so that the public hears that there were things that did put the individuals that could have been in the building at risk had they started doing things, cleaning appropriately, setting up classrooms, as people do.
There is a statement period that we're going to be getting into. So let me just say... Do you have a question? Thank you.
So, Attorney Murphy? I'm gonna, I'm gonna refrain.
Okay, just one second. First, Counselor Doyle, and then Counselor Archer, and then for Vas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Attorney Murphy, is, can you speak on whether every private building that changes over to natural gas gets an inspection and permit?
That would probably be a Dick Lambert question.
All the ones that were using K, number two oil and changed to natural gas, I can't say with certainty that we've been in each and every building. Marcel probably would, because he'd be the one to do the inspection.
As natural gas has become more prevalent, I've had a lot of calls from electricians, from gas, because gas companies wanted them to bond the gas piping. And it's not in the National Electric Code, it's more in the main gas code. That being said, I inspect those when I am made aware of them. And I also warn every electrician that when he does do it, to make sure there's a dielectric coupling in the gas side, because sometimes gas companies don't install this dielectric coupling, can cause spark and cause a huge explosion also. So there's a lot of things that go into it, but we're not made aware of it unless it brought, it gets brought to our attention. And when it's brought to our attention, obviously, we do inspect.
Thank you. Attorney Murphy, are we using the, the June 19th letter to, to Toddlin that CC'd the schools as the 30-day notice?
Yes.
To cover the seven, excuse me, to cover the covenants under 7.1?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we addressed it to one party, but it was copied both to the superintendent and to their attorney separately. Attorney Stockmeyer did indicate to me he'd received the letter, he was aware of it. Bear in mind, at that point, I'm not sure we knew that the schools had taken occupancy. When we sent the notice in July, we were well aware the schools had taken occupancy.
So...
But they got it. And by the way, I believe a Superior Court would find that if you have it in your hand, and your attorney has it in your hand, even if the letter isn't expressly directed and addressed to you, it's still notice. I...
Okay, thank you. So... If we're using that as the proper notice, if you look at that letter, it talks nothing about, it talks about use, and it talks about the lease agreement, and it talks about the money allocation. It does not talk about any abated portion. So if you look at section 7.1 of the covenants, non-related occupant, it permits the city to obey or remove conditions that violate covenants. Well, what, if we're looking at that, how can we use that June 19th letter as the 30-day notice? When the notice or the depowering is the issue being appealed, and the depowering was not notified 30 days beforehand, because it wasn't found 30 days beforehand? So how can we use the June 19th letter to suffice the, the 30-day notification?
So, again, this gets into the issue that we're really talking two different areas. There's the electrical code issue, which we had authority to depower them on, and then there's the covenants, which also allow, in our opinion, self-help. So, the covenants require the 30 days, we tried to notice as much as we knew in that 30 days, and at the end of that letter, I'm pretty certain, at the end of the June 19th letter, there's reference saying, hey, look, we need to get in there because you have a certificate of occupancy issue. And within that, within certificate of occupancy, is the inspections that these folks do. So we, we can't alert them to things we don't know about. So, on June 19th, did we, at that moment, think power was necessarily a problem? No, but we knew we needed to get inspectors in there, and so we were flagging that for them. And again, they just simply said, we don't need to do it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Attorney, Counselor Archer?
This is actually, I'm glad you asked about 7.1, because that's what mine's about. I'm reading the letter from, I believe it's Attorney Fouts, the August 1st letter that you wrote to our city clerk. At the very bottom, it says 7.1 requires 30-day notice. Are there times when exigent circumstances override any type of policies like this? Because I know, for example, if you're a police officer and you hear something yelling, you do, your amendments do actually get broken for a period of time, because it's based on exigent circumstances. So, would this fall under exigent circumstances that would override or overrule or provide that, that extra, whatever you want to call it?
So, thank you. I think that's correct, but I think in this case, we're not arguing that. We believe this was an appropriate 30-day notice. We're trying to flag as many things as we could under the covenants, saying, here are the various violations of the covenants, here's this other issue regarding occupancy that we think is important. When we became aware, as we learned more, we decided to send the extra 10-day notice. That was, really wasn't required. We did it as a courtesy to the schools at that point, we knew they're in the building, and we said, "Look..."
Now, Attorney, under, I believe it's subsection 1 is what you call it, at the very bottom, they come subsections?
The footnotes?
Yeah, footnotes, thank you. I was drawing a blank for a second. She writes that, she argues that the fact that the city did not provide 30 days notice to the school department further supports that section 7.1 does not apply. But in this case, it's an exigent circumstances, this argument is...
Well, I think...
I'll let her reply as well.
Yeah, Attorney Fouts can argue for herself, but I think the argument there is based on the fact that, well, you didn't send it to us, therefore, it doesn't count.
But it would count under exigent circumstances.
I think it counts under all circumstances. All circumstances. Superior Court's gonna accept that.
There's nothing, thank you, there's nothing in the covenants that relates to exigent circumstances, and that makes sense, because the covenants don't contemplate a health or safety issue. What you're talking about is more, you know, harm to a person.
So, you had mentioned that we're trying to keep it on track, but you're arguing 7.1 about covenants, but we're here about safety issues, correct?
We're here about both.
But you're arguing, okay, because I thought earlier you said we're only going to be looking at safety issues, and now it's blending, which is kind of confusing if we're trying to stay on track as counselors.
Yeah, I didn't say we're only here on safety issues. What I said was, we're only here on the narrow issue of the propriety of the electrical inspector's decision issue.
And not covenants.
No, no, because his decision actually relies on both. So the reason I talked about both was because neither supports his decision. He relied on both bases, and neither is an adequate rationale. And on the question of notice, notice is, and I know there's a lot of sort of common sense appeal to, you received something, therefore, you were on notice. Formal legal notice under a binding document needs to be carried out pursuant to the terms of notice. It wasn't with respect to the, the school department. We got 10 days' notice. The, the June 19th letter is, is neither directed to the school department nor requires or requests any action by the school department. It's not notice to the school department. The only request for action is directed to Toddlin. It was notice to Toddlin, it wasn't formal notice under the covenants to the school department.
So, I'm reading, again, your words as you typed it, the only notice to the school department was July 19th, 2019, giving, letter giving it 10 days to cease and desist. So you accept the letter that we wrote then as good, but no other letters can be, are not? So you accepted the first letter, which, was that a legal document? I mean, however you worded it?
No, what I'm saying is, there are formal legal requirements for notice, and the first...
So you accepted the 10-day notice as a formal legal requirement, because you... So you accepted the 10-day notice as a formal legal requirement because you literally said, giving it 10 days to cease and desist, but now you're contradicting a little bit on a 30-day?
No, I'm not contradicting. I'm saying, a letter that is neither addressed to a party nor requires any action by a party is not formal notice to that party. A letter that later, very differently, is addressed to the party and requests action from that party, that is notice with respect to that party. That's, that's the difference.
Do you have a counter?
So...
Is there?
I'm not aware of this legal notice rule. I think, I think the Superior Court's going to say, you sent it to the attorney and you sent it to the superintendent, they're on notice.
Okay.
Typically, we don't address letters to two different parties. At the time, the toddling was the owner. We weren't aware the schools, I'm trying to think, I'm pretty certain we weren't aware the schools had physically moved in at that point when I was drafting that. But nonetheless, we didn't address it to, you know, the address box. But it was copied with the intention that they both get it, so that the superintendent and the school's attorney was on notice. So clearly, they were aware. And they were acting at risk if they ignored it.
I like to bring things into things I know, it just helps me understand better. If a company goes to a union, say, all their employees are terminated, does that union have to literally write every person's name to make it formal? Or is it, by default, we are laying off all members? Like, I'm just, something that I understand, is I believe those group firings for better terminations are done as a group, not as individuals.
I, I don't know, Counselor, I really don't.
I'm all set with this section. The next is just go back to the discussion on occupancy. And I just, it's the text message that we read, and I'm just confused, is this considered occupancy? And I'm just going to read it, it's very short, it's brief, so it's not going to take much time. I'm thinking I'm explaining it longer than it will take.
So it is, it is a question, though?
It, well, I'm going to read it and then ask the question. I need to do it for context. Dear pre-K parents, as promised, we will be providing updates on everything pre-K as we go through the summer months. Today, we got the keys to toddle in and will be moving furniture in next week. The teachers will see the space for the first time tomorrow morning. Hope you have a great summer. We will continue to sending you updates as things progress. Thank you, Superintendent DePatsy. Then he goes, Dominic DePatsy, MSCED, Doctor of Education. Is this evidence that you just moved in occupying? You literally say you have the keys.
Yes, they have the keys, they signed a lease.
And that you're moving in furniture and your staff is showing up. Does that meet all three different types of criteria?
We think so, but I don't believe the test is use. The covenants talk about even less ease. They have a lease right now, that's why they're writing checks to these folks in the back for $24,000 a month, because they have a lease. Counselor Copeland's right, it says less ease. They're less ease, and at least for the foreseeable future, they're less ease. They still have legal occupancy of that building at this moment. They may have not a single piece of equipment and not a single person in there. They have legal occupancy because they hold a lease. Until that lease is resolved, the schools are the tenant in that property.
Thank you.
Attorney Faust.
Thank you. The school department does not have legal occupancy of the space because the city will not permit the school department to occupy the space. The time period, you know, it's, it's actually not relevant, in my view, whether any equipment ever entered the building or not. What's relevant is, on July 30th, was the school department an occupant under the covenants? And the only argument that allows you to conclude that is that the city permitted the school department, what I thought was a courtesy, but maybe it was to allow a further argument that we were occupying the space, allowed the school department to keep some equipment there. In the interim, so that we wouldn't have to move the equipment twice, because there was a very short period of time in which the school department was seeking alternative space before the school year started. So it, it's, I think it's disingenuous at best to say that because we had equipment there with the permission of the city, we were violating the covenants and occupying the space and therefore subject to Article 7.1.
Again, I like to use allegories that I can understand. So I'm a, I have tenants myself, so they have leases. If, in the unfortunate event, and they're safe, my property burns down, are they no longer my tenants because the property is no longer available for use?
I think those are mixed concepts.
I don't believe so. We're talking about tenants and their, their ability to be on premise. If my property burns down, are they still my tenants? Or do I just say, hey, have a good day? Or do I take care of them because they're still my tenants?
The question isn't tenancy, it's use and occupancy. And because, because we are not, the school department is not being permitted by the city to perform occupancy under the lease, we are not an occupant. We are not, we are a less C, I agree, because the lease is still in effect, but we are not using the premises, nor were we as of July 30th. The only exception being, some articles of personal property there with the city's permission.
All right, so the next step is the school department provides its closing argument, and then the city council will officially begin its deliberation, which will be excellent for making the statements that, that you want to make. I want to point out to the council that in the decision-making process, as Attorney Faust just pointed out, the finding for the city can be either that the electrical system violated the electrical code under Chapter 87, or that the inspection was the proper result of the owner's violation of the covenants, codes, and restrictions. So if I could then ask Attorney Faust to give her closing argument, and then the council will begin its deliberation.
Thank you. There's been, I want to touch on a few different things. There's been talk about the significance of CMP and the PUC being satisfied that there was a safety issue, and isn't that sufficient for our purposes? CMP, based on the record before you, simply accepted the representation from the city that there was a safety issue. There was no evidence submitted to CMP, there was no documentation submitted to CMP beyond that. The PUC essentially did the same and said, when a safety issue is the reason, CMP can, can depower. So I think it's being overstated what the significance of CMP and the PUC, you know, blessing this decision, really is. In reality, if there was a safety issue, especially a safety issue of this extreme nature that's being characterized now, I would hope that the first step wouldn't be to go through an administrative process to shut off the power, but instead would be to alert people who may be entering the building, have keys to the building, have access to the building. And I think the fact that that didn't happen, and the fact that nowhere in the depowering letters to the parties is there any mention of any safety concerns, is just further evidence of the fact that the, the issue here is not whether after the fact there were electrical problems discovered, it's whether on July 30th, there was a safety issue that allowed this electrical inspector to depower the site. From the city's own representation in the depowering letters, the reason was not health and safety. The reason was to stop the school department's use of the building. And the only use, as I, as I mentioned a moment ago, the only use that was continuing was with the permission of the city, understanding that the school department was seeking and obtaining alternative space for the pre-K program. So there isn't a basis under the electrical code to support this decision. The covenants, similarly, any use that might have implicated 7.1 was not in existence at the time of, on the date of July 30th, and if it was, was with the permission of the city. Attorney Murphy said, you know, if the, if the point was to interfere with the lease, we haven't done a very good job of it, actually, not, not the case. The city has prevented the, the school department from occupying the space. That's, that's what has happened. And the fact that these issues have been corrected by toddle in doesn't somehow create the ability for this school department to occupy the space. The issues have been apparently corrected by toddle in, and I learned today, approved by the city, but only for use as a daycare center. The use by the school department has not been approved. Something else, and is, is still no longer permitted, or is still not permitted, I should say. Something else that I wanted to mention is, you know, this is clearly a highly politically charged issue, and I know there are varying views about it, and there are lots of frustrations about it. I think it's unfortunate that we are here on this appeal, actually, because what the school department did following the 10-day proper notice to it was to reach out to council for the city, say, we are not going to occupy this space. Can we please keep some items of personal property here? The city says, okay, we hear you. Yes, you can keep some items of personal property there. Then we reach out and say, we understand you're requiring certain approvals for the school department to be able to use 5 Wiley Road. We want to know what those are. We want to know what exactly you're requiring. So based on the letters we've received, we didn't really get any additional information from the city, so based on the letters that we had previously received, we went ahead and sought those approvals. Then, you know, these appeals are pending at the same time, and I reached out to the city and said, you know, to Mr. Murphy, and said, I think it makes sense to stay the appeals. Let us seek our approvals. Then we can come up, if we need to, on appeal and join the issues. So the school department is, has attempted to, you know, we disagreed with the position of the city as is our prerogative. We disagreed with the position of the city. The city made clear it would not permit our use, and we are not using the space. The city made clear that approvals would be required, and we are seeking those approvals. So that's the broader context, and that's the, that's the reality of the situation. On the narrow issue, as I've said a few times, neither the covenants nor the electrical code justify this decision as of July 30th. And I would ask that you reach the question of the covenants, I think it's properly before you. The appeal provision of the electrical code mentions the electrical inspector's actions under the code. I read that to mean that's because that would normally be the, the authority he was acting under. I think that provision also allows you to fully assess his decision, the stated grounds for that decision, and whether they're proper. And under neither the covenants nor, nor the electrical code is this decision proper, and, and I'd ask that it be overturned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we are now leaving the argument and comment period and going into deliberations. Particularly during these deliberations, those of you who made remarks earlier, I think if you could restate them so that they're part of the deliberation process, because they were very good remarks and should be a part of, the deliberatory part of the, of this process. So...
Can I get a copy of the minutes?
Say again?
I talked a lot, so it'd be hard to, can I get a copy of the minutes, or is it too soon?
Want to get a copy of the minutes, yeah. Well, you'll have to catch it on video, see if you can get it on Town Hall Streams and, and replay it to yourself. A couple of questions that should be discussed is, under the covenants, or the electrical code, or any other applicable authority, did the electrical inspector have the authority to depower 5 Wiley Road? And another is whether the electrical code, electrical inspector followed the proper procedure under the covenant, or the electrical code, or other applicable authority prior to depowering. And so I'm looking for some deliberatory statements. Counselor Menthorn, you had a very good one during your question.
Well, in reviewing Tab 2 in our packet...
Sir.
...which was the June 19th letter.
Yep.
I believe it's 53 or something in the packet.
It's 48.
Something like that. I'm not there yet.
Tab 2 starts at 48.
48, and 53 is the last page.
Sure.
Which shows that enclosures included the superintendent as well as Attorney Stockmeyer as well. So both were notified or copied on this correspondence, and then the next to the last paragraph states that, you know, if, if the schools can qualify for a certificate of occupancy. So at that point, I think the schools were on notice that there were requirements that needed to be met with the city with respect to inspections and whatever else might need to take place for a certificate of occupancy. That was June 19th.
Yes, sir.
As I understand, 30 days went by, and we hadn't heard anything. If we hadn't heard anything, then we sent out a 10-day cease and desist letter, which I suspect had a little more oomph behind it, got their attention. But meanwhile, everything keeps moving forward. Yes, the schools had moved stuff in, now they're moving stuff out. Based on our electrical inspector's research in the city files, as well as what he could observe externally, walking around the property and from Google and whatever else, he noted some things that are of great concern. As I pointed out earlier in my remarks, when the city inspected on 8/28, there was an absence of a ground fault circuit for the washing machine, which was within six feet of a sink to prevent electric shock, it wasn't there. The bathroom fans were, some were not working, which is another requirement. There were seven items listed, including the, the bonding of the gas pipe, which I would think would be the most urgent and important of that list, although I can't see splitting hairs over is electrocution more fun than being exploded with is a bad joke today, given what happened in Farmington. But, you know, choose your poison at this point for which one could or could not be, and the fact that we were preventing children from being there is all the more reason that these were all important. As I see this, we've gone through the proper process. Now, maybe, you know, if there's anything, I don't know, maybe we should address it to all three equally instead of courtesy copies or something like that. But nonetheless, the notifications were there, there were efforts made. As I understand it, we didn't receive communications back, inquiries back, anything back in that first 30 days, which is what precipitated the 10-day letter. Obviously, if they would have stepped forward, we probably wouldn't have gone to the 10-day letter because things had started in motion. So I'm sorry, I just, I can't see the, the school's argument at this point. It doesn't, to me, make sense that, given the facts before us and the documentation before us and the printed word showing that the notices were there. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Just a note for the record, Attorney Stockmeyer is a partner to Attorney Faust and also handles Saco School Department matters. Any other comments to my left? Any remarks for the record? Yes, Counselor Copeland, please.
So there was talk about this August 13th letter from the State of Maine Public Utilities Commission.
Yes, ma'am.
Addressed to Miss Carrier at toddling. And it says that I, it says, you know, an introductory paragraph, but it says, I reviewed the disconnection request. I confirmed with CMP that the disconnection of service was done due to safety issues related to the service. I mean, you say, well, they only sold it on a piece of paper. They have faith that our master electrician, certified by the state, licensed by the state, I'm sure, is qualified. So I don't think that they have to send somebody else, they already have someone qualified that they have licensed. He says it's an emergency, needs to be shut off, it gets shut off. So what else, what other fun things did we talk about? So, what else, what other fun things did we talk about? All right, let me go back to my notes. We did talk about the occupancy. I strongly, I mean, it's right on the face of the page. It says occupant under the covenants is defined as a lot owner, lessor, optionee of the declarant, or any other person or entity other than the declarant in lawful possession of a lot with the permission of the declarant. A lease, keys, come on in, kids with our text message and our emails, that, to me, says occupancy. We've got occupancy here. And it's still just, well, you want everything back in the record? Here we go. Our master electrician has stated in his affidavit that the main power line was not properly protected. He provided photographs of dents all around there, and the electrical boxes all marred. The current transformer serving the building has a potential of delivering 240 volts with 38,540 amp AIC. This is sufficient power to vaporize metals and cause instant death. All right? Vaporizing metals is rather colorful, but instant death is horrific. And we have our children there. And we also see in that there was a pool there that was not inspected, or has a certificate of occupancy. Now, I just looked on Google Earth, because it didn't occur to me. I thought maybe it was, like, indoors and separated. It's out there. So, we have children who could just run off on the bus. It's possible that those children could've gone near that pool that had electrical issues. This is very serious, very, very serious. There are extreme safety issues, and I believe that our master electrician followed the protocols, was in line with his chain of command, and did everything appropriately. I can't see otherwise. I mean, there's a main PUC concurrence, no permit for the pool. Pool was not grounded. The conversion of gas, I mean, all of these things should've been a little bit obvious that somebody should've looked at this. And so, we're talking about the covenants, so then we can't not say that the people who were selling the property, or leasing the property, they were bound by the covenants to bring up this noncompliance and all this stuff. So, it starts there. Then, it goes to the school's side, where they didn't do the due diligence, and didn't read the covenants that are clearly in the registry of deeds. So, there's plenty of blame to go around, but I'm really proud that we did the right thing, that the children are not put in harm's way, and that's how I feel.
Thank you very much. Councilor Johnston, anything?
Thank you. Again, I'm not going to speak to the covenants issue, because I believe that's better suited for Superior Court. I am disappointed that we're here to begin with, because, as Council Copeland just said, the school officials had done the due diligence, including the school board, to actually look into this. We wouldn't be here. If we went back to, I believe it was March 18th, when I sat here in a workshop criticizing the school department for the way they handled the potential site location at Young School, and apparently, that fell on deaf ears, because they turned right around and went and got themselves into another nightmare mess. Speaking specifically just to what we're here for, which is Chapter 87, City Council, in fact, I believe it was this council, most recently adopted the current standards of the National Electric Code. Our electrical inspector, Mr. Derocher, as he stated, he reviewed the file on record, looked at Google Earth images, and based on his expertise, he determined that there was life-threatening issues. That alone is enough for me. I'm not an electrician, you know? I might moonlight as one here and there, but I'm not one. So, you know, he's the expertise.
My cell's getting...
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm thinking that right now. And I trust him, you know? He's 22-plus years, and he's our expert. I side with him on this, so...
Thank you very much. Councilor Archer?
Yes, so when I'm taking this consideration, well, one, I do want to recognize Attorney Fouts, I think he did try to defend your position, but in the end, I believe this is an appeals, and it has to be more than a preponderance. It needs to be enough evidence to overrule a decision that's made. Now, what I look into, is what I'm talking to the councilors for, is did the city have a right to pull the inspections? Did the city have a legal right to be on the property? And did the city have a right for the line-of-sight assessment and be allowed to take proper action on what they saw? I do believe that's a yes. Again, the appeals, you need sufficient evidence to overrule, and I didn't see that occur. And lastly, I do want to thank the code department. You kind of, you saved some of our children. I am afraid of what could've happened when we put 150 of our own students, pre-K students, and for you to stand up and to take action to protect our children, I applaud your whole department, and the staff, and all of you that provided affidatives. Again, I didn't see enough evidence to overrule our code department.
So, let me make also another quick comment for the record. The PUC letter is page 85 in our packet. Councilor Gay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can go back and forth all night long, what fault it is, but the most concern is the children's safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, Councilor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out, you know, I don't like to pit folks against each other, but the children were never in any harm. They never occupied the building. So, that needs to be said, and it needs to be said loud. I do value the code department, and thank you for the work that you do, because you did recognize some problems, and those problems have since been corrected. But let's not make this an emotionally charged issue about children in a facility that they never occupied. We had put them on notice on June 19th that the lease was not valid. We followed up that with a cease and desist later on in July. So, let's not make this an emotionally charged issue about children, because that's not right. However, let's look at the, when we make a decision here, and we look at what the questions that are before us, let's look at the questions of whether the electrical inspector had the right to do what he did, and then follow through with that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Archer.
Yes, to the council, I do have to dissent from...
Excuse me. Address the chair, not another council.
Sorry, yes, that's correct, to the chair, through the council.
No, to the chair.
Sorry. So, I do dissent from Councilor Doyle's position on there were no children involved. Children have been there for many years, and these are Saco children, these are surrounding communities' children. So, there is an aspect of children's safety, just not in the sense of our pre-K that was being presented. I do recognize that. But children were at risk, according to testimony, affidatives, and what we've discussed today.
Thank you very much. Any other comments to my right? Seeing none. Comments to my left? So, the question at hand, I believe that we've moved through the 3 block, and we're into the 4 block, is to get a motion from the council, and that this motion is either a, and if it is a, that the electrical inspector properly ordered the electrical power to Five Wiley Road to be depowered, that motion should include whether it's due to the electrical system, due to the fact that the electrical system violated the electrical code in Chapter 87, or if it were due as a result of the owner's violation of the covenant's conditions and restrictions, or both. So, if I could have a, if the deliberation is not going to continue any further, let me have a motion to either that, or the electrical inspector erred in ordering the electrical power to Five Wiley Road be depowered.
I'll make that motion.
So, you'll make a motion? Councilor Archer, would you please make a motion?
I'll make the motion that the Saco electrical inspector properly ordered the electrical power to Five Wiley Road to be depowered.
And for one or...
Another...
Either, both of these, either, or the or. So, it's either one of these, or both.
That it was, that it violated the electrical code, or that it violated the...
So, I can change that to an and?
And you can change that to an and.
Okay. A finding for a A can be either that the electrical system violated the electrical code, Chapter 87, and that it was a proper result of the owner's violations of the covenant's conditions and restrictions.
So, the motion on the floor now is that the electrical inspector properly ordered the electrical power to Five Wiley Road be depowered, and the reason why was both a violation of the electrical code, Chapter 87, and a violation in the covenant's restrictions and...
Conditions.
Conditions.
Second. Second.
So, that's a motion on the floor, and seconded by Councilor Archer, or seconded by Councilor Johnston. Any... So, any councilors wishing to comment to my right? And any councilors wishing to comment to my left? Seeing none. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorn?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. This matter is now concluded, and we go to the, back to the, our regular agenda.
Why don't we take a five-minute recess?
We got two...
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Okay. We will reconvene in five minutes. That will be at 8:40. To allow the council to... Because I can't control it. And it is in such comments. He wants his seat back.
I'm good.
I'm good.
No, you can't. Says in the charter, you can't leave the building. We have to vote on making him the assistant city administrator.
I'm on my way out.
Okay, great. So, good, yeah, thank you.
Just letting you know if you have any questions.
Yeah, everything, I think he came out cleanly. Thank you, appreciate it. Hope I get your vote. Okay, is this a, do I get a check with this? Yeah, right. I'm so well-paid now. Yeah, I see that. And I sign it, for Saco City Council. Verify the audience, signature of me, and then, what is the 16th of September?
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's it? Okay, yep, there you go. And so, we have a line of them all.
So, what's going on? You guys just go do?
Yeah, send you an E. We're doing our citizenship right now. And we're helping people.
What do you think? This was, this was a...
Yeah. I went to, I went through a couple in my town for high school, but never one that...
Well, this was judicial. You know, we learned something about our government. We have, we make org friends, and that's legislative, but this was judicial. We had to decide as an appellate level, you know, very low level.
And it is unusual, although for this, this council has had more hearings than my entire time on the council. So, I don't know, it's a special time.
Do you have six terms as a councilor?
Yeah, three, yeah, six years, yeah. That's right. Okay, so the... So the next matter... Oh, am I looking at the right thing? The next matter is a credit enhancement agreement between the City of Saco... I think I may have to go to my tablet. Oh, here it is, yep, I got it. Between the City of Saco and Foresight Realty, a business operating as Bedford Saco Dental Associates. Councilor Smart, do I have a motion?
I do.
Or do you have a motion?
I, I do, thank you. A credit enhancement agreement, or CEA, for Foresight Realty LLC, or the company, is being presented for consideration. This application is for a CEA that will be part of the existing TIF number fifteen Downtown Omnibus Municipal Tax Increment Financing District. The credit enhancement agreement will be for fourteen years with the following terms: In year one through five, Foresight Realty LLC will receive fifty percent of the TIF revenues, and the city will receive fifty percent of the TIF revenues. In years six through ten of the CEA, the company will receive forty-five percent of the TIF revenue, and the city will receive fifty-five percent. In years eleven and twelve, the company will receive twenty-five percent, and the city will receive seventy-five percent. In years thirteen and fourteen, the city will receive one hundred percent. For any remaining years of the district, the city will continue to receive one hundred percent of the TIF revenue. The CEA will have a cap of TIF revenue going to Foresight Realty LLC in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand. The city will retain funds from the TIF revenue for use for project costs outlined in the development program. The CEA was reviewed by the Economic Development Commission at their September ninth, 2019 meeting, recommended to go to City Council for the first reading and public hearing. The CEA was also reviewed at the City Council workshop held on November, or September ninth, 2019. Council ordered, the council order for this credit enhancement agreement, which will be part of the first reading, public hearing, and second and final reading, will be as followed, follows: "The city administrator is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Foresight Realty LLC in substantially the form as presented to City Council."
Second. I have a motion by Councilor Smart?
Hang on, I haven't actually read the motion yet.
I'm sorry.
That was, that was what the order will be if we approve it. I move to approve the first reading and to schedule the public hearing on October seventh, 2019, on the order the city administrator is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Foresight Realty LLC in substantially the form as presented to the City Council.
Second. So I have a motion by Councilor Smart, seconded by Councilor Menthorn, on a credit enhancement agreement with Bedford Saco Dental Associates. Any comments to my right? Councilor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let the council know that I did sit at the Economic Development Commission meeting, and all were very much approval of this project, but I would also like to bring up the fact that we really need to work on getting the financial disclosure protocols into place, as we've asked about for, for a while now. But the EDC was very much in favor of this, and spoke highly about this project. Thank you.
Thank you, and that did come up at our last workshop under meetings and agenda, and Mr. Sutherland does have that down. There is a little bit of ball neck because it's associated with economic and planning, economic development and planning, and they have a rather full plate just at this moment. Any other comments to my left? Oh, Councilor Johnston?
Yeah, I've got several. First, since Councilor Doyle brought it up, I went back this weekend and looked through things, and pretty confident that this council, or the previous council, actually approved the financial disclosure product, disclosure protocol on January seventeenth, 2017. That was a seven oh vote. So those are in place, and haven't been followed, as far as I can tell. So, I don't know if the intent was to edit those, or, or what, but they are in place. And as far as I can tell, this TIF, or this credit enhancement and previous ones, since we've approved them, have not been providing all the information that's required in the protocol.
I'll inquire of the city administrator on this coming Wednesday.
As for this, let's see. So, again, the issues with this for me are more of a policy matter for council. The intent of the downtown development district, when the previous council approved it, back in seventeen, I believe it was, was to capture more tax revenue into the district so we could use this revenue to fund projects in this entire district. It's a large district. Those were public improvement projects, primarily from what I remember. Credit enhancements were a part of that agreement, they were, they're in the TIF. Do I think that every single project should be issued a credit enhancement? Certainly not, and in this particular case, nothing against the applicant, I think so far, I've supported everything they've brought forward. There's no clear need, or financial need here, which is, again, going back to 2017, the previous council that I was on, we adopted TIF guidelines, credit enhancement guidelines, which that was a requirement, was to show financial need. There's several other things that are presented in this credit enhancement that don't meet the guidelines, and again, they're guidelines, but they were adopted by council then as our intent. It wasn't to have, really even then, fifty percent TIFs, or, or credit enhancements, or for extended years. I think it was ten years was, was the concept then. I mean, the issue I have is, you know, money in, money out. If we're taking, we're growing the TIF district, which this project would, but it's going to do it regardless. There's no but for situation here, there's nobody telling you, I'm, I can only come to Saco but for a credit enhancement. Right? So I would use an example of a good credit enhancement is the most recent one, which is Ready Seafood. They're bringing two hundred-plus jobs, their project will pay for the actual SOAR extension. This is just handing money out, in my personal opinion. I'm going to say the same thing for the next one, too. I, I just, I'm concerned that the idea, going back several years ago, was to grow this district so we could do, we could grow our downtown, you know? And, again, they, they were a part of it, but so far, right out the gate, we already have two. I'm like, I'm kind of sitting back worried that I'm going to see Convenient MD coming for one retroactively, or whoever else out there. And so that's my concerns, so.
Thank you, Councilor Menthorn.
To address that statement, as I recall, from different conversations that have taken place so far, they're actually going to be expanding a large portion of their business. I mean, right now, they have like six exam rooms, they're going to have like fifteen at the new facility. The upper portion of the building, which is unfinished currently, is expected to get built out for other specialists and stuff to come in as the business expands and grows over the next few years. I would think this would be funding that growth, not only in immediate exam rooms and the expansion of those from the six to the fifteen or so they're talking about, but also the extra facilities for the specialists and stuff as they come on board. Thank you.
Now, Councilor Johnston?
Perhaps, that might be their argument, but they haven't shown it. But I also would refer back to the planning board that approved this project, and at that time, they had to show financial capacity. So the understanding was that they had, you know, the financing to do this project, not midway through, come back and say, oh, well, because there's credit enhancements available, now I want almost four hundred K worth. That's the concern, is that you're setting an example for everybody else to come forward and say, well, it's there, I want one too. And it's us that decides who gets them, there's no, you automatically get it. And I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but even going back to those executive sessions we had, there was an understanding from the applicant that, you know, maybe I may or, or may not get this. It wasn't, I have to have this. So, again...
Councilor Copeland?
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Johnston. I'm wondering if, if you can direct me to where I can find those guidelines?
They were approved...
January seventeenth, 2017, I'm going to send an email with the links to those.
Thank you very much.
They were approved on April third, 2017, because there had been several amendments by council.
So there is an, there was an initial motion, it went through the council process, and as amended, was approved by the council in April of 2017.
Correct.
Any other comments to my left? Comments to my right? Councilor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm more, I understand that we did approve some of those in, in 2017, however, there were some that came up in 2018 that never got before us, or, or got before us for a first reading and, or during a workshop, and never moved forward. And those are the enhanced financial disclosure protocols I'm, I'm talking about.
Okay, so that, we do have a, we have a fiscal or financial disclosure policy, there were some, some amendments to it that were looked upon in 2018, apparently, that did not go beyond the workshop. So, that summarizes basically your comments. Any other comments to my right? Any additional comments to my left? Councilor Copeland? Thank you, any, seeing no additional comments to my, oh, excuse me, Councilor Archer?
It just came into my head, sorry about that. I'm not too familiar with the 2017, because we weren't, I wasn't sent it at that time. Do any of those two seven, 2017 conflict, anything that's with this project, disagreement? I guess this would be Council Doyle or Councilor Johnston? Should we, should we take cautious?
Sure. Councilor Doyle, you were on the council in twenty-seventh, in January twenty-seventh?
I don't have those, those financial disclosure protocols right in front of me.
So, again, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add this now, instead of writing it an email to send to the council, so...
Please.
This protocol is found from January seventeen, we have not been utilizing or following in any capacity. I take full responsibility for telling Denise that they hadn't been approved, and I think it gets convoluted with the workshop discussion about revising those, and the need to revise those. So going forward, we will consider the document, but we haven't even had a chance to review it, or revise, or bring potential changes that need to be made to that document. So we've been working under certain expectations and bringing, bringing potential businesses to the council for discussion and executive session with them before disclosing them publicly.
Okay, and then, before I go to Ms. Clavett. So, basically, what I see is that this process is going to be going on. I'm not exactly sure how well-versed Ms. Clavett is on the actions that happened in 2017 and 2018, but there's certainly going to be time in, in, when the public hearing is, is, occurs, which is going to be October seventh, for you to have reviewed all of that material. So do you want to speak to this at this time, or would you like to wait until the seventh and, and you've read everything?
I'm fully aware of the policy, and I would just like to address it real briefly. Real briefly, the policy is a guideline, number one. Number two is addresses development districts, creating TIF districts, that's where the financial disclosure is completely an issue. Then you get to a subsection of it that refers to credit enhancement agreements, which is the less primary version of the, of the document. It says you have to create at least fifteen jobs, which that person has met. And it has other criteria and investment, and it also talks about creating some other provisions for public enhancements, which this person is doing. So, the, even though we don't issue the guideline and have them bullet-by-bullet go through it, because I've been advised not necessarily to do it quite that way rigidly, it is a guideline, we use it as a guideline, and that individual company has met every piece of that guideline.
Thank you, very informative, Ms. Clavett. Any questions of Ms. Clavett to my right? Any questions of Ms. Clavett to my left?
But they're not questions, they're just statements.
Okay, go ahead, make a statement.
I'm not going to disagree one way or another about that, but I, I don't think that it's been clearly presented that the applicant meets these guidelines, or that it shows what this money's for. Why are we giving this person money, other than they want it, for this entity? So that's my concern, is that if they were saying, well, I'm going to put all new sidewalks in front of the, the business, okay, I can understand that, or something to that degree, stating that, well, we're adhering to the... that, well, we're adhering to the contract zone requirements, that's not public improvement. That was part of your conditions. So, again, that's concern with that one. But I'm not here to argue all this right now. I can email it.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Additional questions, so comments to my left, seeing none. To my right, seeing none. Motion on the floor is a credit enhancement agreement between the City of Saco and Foresight Realty, which is doing business as, therefore, Saco Dental Associates. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
And Counselor Minteron?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. This will move to the public hearing on October 7th, and I expect that we'll be receiving informational emails along the way. Counselor Johnston, do you have a motion?
A credit enhancement agreement, or CEA, for Baxter and Cuts LLC company is being presented for consideration. This application is for the credit enhancement that will be part of the existing TIF, number 15 Downtown Omnibus Municipal Tac Increment Financing District. Credit enhancement agreement would be for 20 years, with the following terms. In years 1 through 15, Baxter and Cuts LLC will receive 60% of the TIF revenues, and the city will receive 40% of the TIF revenue. In years 16 through 20 of the credit enhancement agreement, the city will receive 100% of the TIF revenue, and the company will receive 0%. In any remaining years of the district, the city will continue to receive 100% of the TIF revenue. Credit enhancement will have a cap of TIF revenue going to Baxter and Cuts LLC in the amount of $225,000. The city will retain funds from TIF revenues to use for project cost outlined in the development program. The credit enhancement was reviewed by the Economic Development Commission at their September 9th, 2019 meeting, recommended to go to the city council for first reading and public hearing. The credit enhancement was also reviewed at the city council workshop held on September 9th, 2019. The council order for this credit enhancement agreement, which will be part of the first reading, public hearing, and second and final reading will be as follows. The city administrator is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Baxter and Cuts LLC, and substantially the form as presented to the city council. I move to approve the first reading and to schedule a public hearing on October 7th, 2019, on the order the city administrator is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with the Baxter and Cuts LLC, and substantially the form as presented to the city council.
Thank you. Do you have a second on this motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Smart, on a credit enhancement agreement, first reading on, with Baxter and Cuts doing business in the City of Saco as quints. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Any comments to my left? Counselor Johnston?
As I said before, I could say the exact same things about this one, but even more so with this one, because this particular agreement doesn't even come close to the 15 job creation that is stated in our guidelines, and has always been part of the city's guidelines for as far as I can remember. Yeah. So that's my concerns with sticking to at least the guidelines.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other comments to my left? To my right, seeing none. Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Minteron?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. Next up, Counselor Minteron?
Thank you, Mayor. The payment of property taxes is a significant challenge for senior citizens who are either retired or working less than regular hours. In order to assist seniors in need, property tax credits are available to qualifying seniors. Due to the recent changes in the Senior Citizen Tax Work Off Program, in addition to the new, of a new program, the Senior Tax Assistant Match Program, it was necessary to implement a new ordinance. The city proposes to repeal and replace existing Section 220 of the City Code governing tax relief programs for its senior citizens. This ordinance would be cited as Chapter 175 Senior Tax Relief. It will replace in its entirety the existing Chapter 220 of the City Code. Staff recommends adoption. The City of Saco hereby approves the first reading of the proposed Chapter 175 Senior Tax Relief, and further moves to schedule the public hearing date of October 7th, 2019.
Okay. So I have a motion by Counselor Minteron, seconded by Counselor Doyle, to move to a public hearing, a proposed Chapter 175 Senior Tax Relief. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minteron?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0. Counselor Minteron, do you have a motion?
The City of Saco hereby moves to repeal Chapter 220 of the city ordinance as part of the possible enactment of the new Chapter 175, and moves to schedule a public hearing for consideration of the repeal of said Chapter 220 on October 7th, 2019.
Second.
So I have, again, a motion by Counselor Minteron, seconded by Counselor Doyle, to repeal Chapter 220, and that this is the first reading, and will move to a public hearing on October 7th, 2019. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Minteron?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp, or Smart, excuse me, Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Archer?
Aye.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
And that motion passes 7-0. Next up, Counselor Johnston, on zoning site plan and subdivision ordinance revision, project completion timeline. This is basically to introduce into the public record the project timeline in a rather wordy motion. I have it printed, would you like to?
No, Counselor Smart helped me out. On February 20th, 2018, the city council voted to adopt the 2018 update of Saco's Comprehensive Plan. The 2018 Comp Plan update was resolved, two years of review and discussion by an ad hoc committee and city staff. As a community, our next step is to update the zoning ordinance to align with the City of Saco's land use vision. The most forward-thinking land use policies in the state of Maine that ensure financial stability, environmental sustainability, and provides opportunities and accessibility to all. The city council voted to establish a zoning ordinance revision with ZOR Steering Committee on October 15th, 2018. After a competitive RFP process, the City of Saco contracted with Planning Consultants, TZM Planning and EF Design and Planning LLC, or the consultants, to update Saco zoning ordinance in the fall of 2018. In February 2019, the city and the consultants initiated an online survey of Saco residents and property owners soliciting input on zoning-related topics that warranted further discussion by stakeholders. A total of 1,080 people participated in the survey. A public charrette was held on February 7th at the People's Choice Credit Union, and over 70 Saco residents participated. Based on the public input and the feedback and direction from the steering committee, city council, planning board, historic preservation commission, conservation commission, other city boards and committees, and the city staff from all departments, draft two of the land use ordinances were completed in and posted online in late August. The ZOR Steering Committee and the planning board have held individual work sessions as well as joint workshops or work sessions to review these draft two documents, and the city council held a workshop on this topic on Monday, September 9th, 2019. The city has hosted two public forums on Tuesday, September 10th, and Wednesday, September 11th. About a dozen residents attended each open-house style meeting and provided valuable input to the process. Feedback from these forums and city boards and committees will be compiled and integrated into a final draft, which will then go through a formal public hearing and adoption process with the planning board and city council. The project completion timeline revised as of 9/11/19 outlines the anticipated schedule for adoption of the ordinance's revision, as well as other key dates in the process, including public hearing from the planning board and historic preservation board on Tuesday, October 22nd, and the city council public hearing on Monday, November 4th. To help ensure extensive notification and participation for the final stages of the multi-year effort, staff intends to mail a letter to all property owners in the city, providing project background and the dates and times of the three upcoming public hearings. This letter goes beyond state and local notification requirements, which is appropriate for such a significant project. In order to meet legal requirements and provide timely notices of these meetings to be public, staff is requesting the council approve this timeline tonight, so the city staff is, so city staff can move forward with printing and mailing the letter, which will be sent Tuesday, October 8th. I move to approve the project completion timeline for this project, including the city council first reading on October 21st, 2019, public hearings with the historic preservation and planning board on October 22nd, 2019, city council public hearing on November 4th, 2019, and city council's second and final reading and vote on November 18, 2019.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Gay, do I have a second?
Second.
Apparently Counselor Doyle wants to have a second in there, so we'll give it to him. So, any comments to my right? Seeing none. Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Minteron?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0. So, Ms. Clavett, you have your schedule. Next up on the agenda is the administrative update. Mr. Sutherland?
Well, first, I want to say thank you for the support in that timeline. I was really hopeful that this council would be the final vote, seeing how you've been involved in basically every step of the zoning ordinance update process. So I think it's fitting for this council to have that final vote and see Saco's future at that meeting before your council changes. So I sent an email a little while ago with the administrative update, as well as the updated public-friendly version of the budget book. That will be on the website tomorrow. We, once council approved the budget in May, we put up a line item version that we were able to print right out of Munis, but it's not very user-friendly. So unfortunately, our finance director had some scheduled time away, and she's starting to put in a few hours and was able to finish this project for us. We intend to submit the public-friendly version to the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award in the coming days. Streaming meetings and council recap videos. Earlier this month, we switched our streaming system from a third-party vendor, and I know that you mentioned Town Hall Streams. They are no longer our provider. We're doing in-house production. An independent streaming device addresses security concerns, improves the quality of the video output, and creates a potential for additional streaming capabilities. It also improves a digital user's experience and ability to follow along with the agenda and discussion topics. As of this week, we now have the ability to stream both the city council meeting and school board meetings, and those, and there are new futures, features that are being used even this evening. So when you visit our website, you'll see Facebook Live, Saco TV, also TA TV, and YouTube as the different ways to watch city council meetings. As you're aware, we posted a council meeting recap video earlier this month. The purpose of the city council recap video was to make sure constituents are aware of the topics discussed during the meetings. So many community members who watch the meetings live, and we hope even more community members will watch the meetings with our improved streaming capabilities. The audience we are targeting with the recaps are those community members who are not currently streaming or viewing the meetings. So based on the feedback we have received, we will adjust these recaps to be a brief text summary that includes timestamp references to full meeting video, instead of creating a separate video. By adding timestamps, we intend to have people refer to the original video on YouTube to watch the entire discussion for a specific topic of interest. We aim to make the meetings as easy for people to follow along as possible, but we do not want to deter people from watching the full discussion surrounding each decision. Our goal is to ensure people feel informed. If we can increase engagement among a portion of the population that isn't watching the full meetings, then it is worthwhile. The timestamps on the original video will still accomplish this goal, and we are comfortable moving in that direction. If the council would like to learn more about the initiatives staff have taken to enhance our communications, I'd be happy to invite them to present at a future workshop. Police Department reorganization. With the appointment of our new police chief, Jack Clements has decided to make a slight reorg to the administrative level of the department. This reorganization has no impact on the budget or current staffing levels, and will provide some career ladder opportunities, as well as strengthen our succession planning goals. In addition, we will be coming to council next month for support for two more police officers. September, joint school board and city council meeting, it was mentioned at the beginning of this council meeting that we will have a meeting on Wednesday, September 25th, with the school board. Changes to the Saco City Charter were approved at the ballot box last November and took effect July 1st. So in those changes, the council has moved forward language in Section 6.02, submissions of budgets in which the city council and school board shall meet in joint session in September and December. So that is our first order, based on the new charter language. The main clerk of the year. Hey, Michelle. She's like, not again. So...
Make sure to put that in the minutes.
Last Tuesday, Main Town and City Clerks Association held their annual meeting in which Michelle Hughes, Saco City Clerk, was awarded the 2019 Municipal Clerk of the Year. This award is the highest honor given by the Main Town and City Clerks Association and recognizes excellence in both Michelle's service to the community and to the profession of municipal clerk. Michelle has worked for the Saco City Clerk's Office since 1989 as assistant deputy, and since 2011, city clerk. In her 30 years with the city, Michelle has helped countless citizens, whether they needed a particular license, a vital record, or to cast a ballot. She is highly respected by all city staff and has a deep well of knowledge that can only be gained through the decades of service to the community. Please join me in congratulating her on the incredible accomplishment. Her city plaque is now hanging in the city hall. It's right next to Dick Lambert's Code Enforcement Officer of the Year from 2010. So thank you, Michelle, for all you do for the City of Saco. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So where on the website do you connect to the video? And I stand corrected, of course, that we no longer use Town Hall Streams. So I go to government, or?
Oh.
Oh, you're going to send me a link.
No, I will look it up, because I honestly haven't been there in a while.
Government?
Yeah?
Council, it's on that page.
Okay. So the, so the far-left selection is government, at the top is government. You click on that, and you will...
Go to council?
Oh, go to council, and then you click on that, it goes on that page.
City council meetings.
There you go. Excellent. Thank you very much, Counselor Copeland. Next up, council comment and discussion. Any counselors to my right? To my left? Yes? Oh, Counselor Minteron?
I'm going to make a quick one.
Yes, sir.
I had a couple text messages since we had our discussion regarding the appeal, that some of us may have seemed a little indifferent to the safety of the children, in stating that there were no children impacted by what was going on at Toddlin. We are incredibly sensitive to the safety of the children. I think the point that was made was that there were a few school staff that were in potential of harm's way with the conditions that were found in the building, and that if it wasn't for the foresight of our code enforcement officer and electrical inspector, there was a great potential there for children to be harmed. Now, I think the bigger issue in my mind is the fact that up until the end of May and to June, there were actually children in this building that were potentially in harm's way, and by the grace of God, nothing happened. And it certainly could have turned out much worse and much differently for the owners of Toddlin. And no one, I don't believe I'm speaking out of turn, saying that I don't think anyone sitting up here isn't very cognizant of that fact, knowing we have counselors that had children at Toddlin, as well as the fact that the potential for life safety has never been taken lightly by this council in the four years that I've been sitting here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Well said. Okay. First, are there any counselors to my right that wish to speak on this? Mr. Sutherland?
And so, because Andrew is recording the meeting upstairs, he did send me a quick email, said saco main.org/watchmeetings. And there's a lot of information about how you can learn all about what's going on.
Thank you. So, no other comments to my right? Any other comments to my left? Seeing none. Seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, I have a motion from Counselor Gay. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second from Counselor Smart. Counselor Archer?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Mintern?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
9:25. We are adjourned.
We did a lot in a little time.
We're 9:25.